Good evening. Hello, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight on a stormy night. Tonight is Thursday, September 20th. The time is 6:00 PM, and this is a regular meeting of the Leander City Council. Welcome. First, we'd like to invite Pastor Brian Lightsey with Life Church. He'll be providing the invocation, and I'm going to ask him to come to the podium. Please remain standing for the pledges of allegiance afterwards.
God, we thank you for the rain, for reminding us of our dependence on you, our need for you. We thank you for Leander, for its growth, its prosperity, for the community it's becoming. We know the scripture tells us we are to pray and make in recession a request for all those in authority. And so now we pray for our mayor, all of our various city officials, and especially this council assembled here tonight. We pray you'd grant them an awareness of the needs of the city and the citizens, a wisdom to balance those needs, and a sense of satisfaction and fulfillment in the work that they do in serving their city. I pray blessings on each council member and their families. We pray for the agenda set before them tonight. We pray, Father, for all those who will speak. And we pray, Father, that every decision that is made will be for the benefit of the people and bring honor to you. And I pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Ms. Crabtree, could you do the roll call?
Councilmember Andrea Navarrete.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Shannon Shepard. Councilmember Christine Sederquist.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Seiler.
Here.
Councilmember Marcy Cannon.
Here.
Mayor Troy Hill.
Here. We do have a quorum. We can do business. At this time, I'd like to ask for staff comments.
None to deny.
Okay. Now is the time for our citizens' comments. When I call your name, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. I actually do not have anybody signed up to speak. Is there anybody that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Anyone? Okay, all right. We'll move ahead now. We want to do recognitions, proclamations, visitors. I don't see any visitors tonight. At this time, I'd like for Chief Greg Men to come forward, and I'd like for Councilmember Seiler to read the National Night Out proclamation.
Lieutenant Mitchell.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're a chief substitute, but you'll do it.
Yes, I'm Lieutenant Mitchell. I'm substituting for Chief Men today. Council, mayor, city manager. First of all, I'd like to say, Leander Police Department would like to invite all citizens of our community to participate in this 35th Annual National Night Out Campaign on October 2nd, along with the other communities across the nation. National Night Out's purpose is to promote community involvement in crime prevention activities, to build police-community partnerships, neighborhood camaraderie, and to send a message to criminals, letting them know that Leander neighborhoods are organized and will not tolerate criminal activity in our community. Currently, we have 35, over 35 events that will be hosted by various neighborhoods throughout the community. Information about the events is provided on our department website, on our community services page, by clicking on National Night Out. I'd like to thank the council for their continued support in this event and endeavor that we take on doing this, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Let me read this proclamation here. It says, "Whereas the National Association of Town Watch and the Leander Police Department are sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on October 2nd entitled National Night Out, and whereas this event provides a unique opportunity for the city of Leander to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime-prevention efforts, and whereas it is essential for all citizens of the Leander be aware of the importance of crime-prevention programs that impact the safety and security of their community, and that their active participation can help reduce crime, and whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are the primary themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of Leander, Texas, do hereby call upon all citizens of Leander to join the Leander Police Department in supporting National Night Out 2018, and further let it be that we, the city of Leander, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018, as National Night Out."
Do we get a picture?
Yes, hurry.
We're going to come down?
Absolutely. All right. come forward, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Marcy Cannon to read the Constitution Day proclamation.
Sally Hunt has not made it here tonight.
Okay.
Whereas September 17th, 2018, marks the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, Mayor Troy Hill, by virtue of the authority vested in him as mayor of the city of Leander, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In testimony thereof, Mayor Hill affixes his signature this 20th day of September." Ladies, you're with the daughters of... Okay. We used an acronym earlier, so I wanted to make sure that we got the full name out.
That's right.
Thank you all for coming. Next, we're going to have Tammy Smith and Connie Odom with Williamson County Behavioral Task Force, and ask them to come forward. Are they here? No. Oops. We're going to ask Councilmember Christine Sederquist to read the Suicide Prevention Awareness Month proclamation.
Whereas the city of Leander recognizes suicide as a public health problem, with suicide being the 11th leading cause of death overall of Texans, and whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, reports that nearly 45,000 lives were lost to suicide in 2016, and whereas the CDC further reports that suicide rates went up more than 18% in half of the states since 1999, including in Texas, and whereas the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention reports that there are, on average, 123 suicides per day, and for every suicide, there are 25 attempts, and whereas suicide is preventable, and the stigma associated with seeking treatment for mental illness, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services should be eliminated, and barriers that discourage persons at risk from seeking lifesaving help should be removed, and whereas Allen's Hope is dedicated to preventing suicides by promoting hope, awareness, and support in Williamson County communities, and whereas Allen's Hope is striving to increase awareness of ways to improve mental health through a self-care calendar developed with the Williamson County Wellness Alliance. Now therefore, Mayor Troy Hill does hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Williamson County, and encourages everyone to save the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline number 1-800-273-TALK, T-A-L-K, onto their phones to have ready when they meet someone in need. In testimony whereof, Troy Hill has affixed his signature on this 20th day of September 2018.
Thank you very much. Tonight is a special night. We have a birthday today. This is Councilmember Navarrete's birthday, so we have a special picture, and we are all... I'm going to invite everybody to join in.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Angela. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you all so much. Wow. Thank you. Very embarrassed, but thank you very much.
Believe me, we wanted a childhood picture, but we didn't have one, or else you would be looking at that there.
That's a good thing. Thank you all.
Happy birthday.
Appreciate you all.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to move to our consent agenda. Counsel, this is an action item.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Navarrete, with a second by Pro Tem Stevenson. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, we're going to move to our public hearings. These are action items. Number 14, conduct a public hearing regarding subdivision case 18-CP-007 to adopt the Homestead Concept Plan on two parcels of land approximately 58.3 acres in size, particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcels R383653 and R433339. We needed one more 3 in there. Generally located to the northeast of the intersection of North Baghdad Road and Collaborative Way, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Ms. Griffin?
Yes, this is a public hearing for the property located to the northeast of the intersection of Baghdad Road and Collaborative Way. This concept plan proposal includes 63 two-family lots, 111 single-family lots, and 8.9 acres of parkland. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this case at the September 13th meeting, and they unanimously recommended approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Last chance, anyone wanting to speak? Okay, we're going to... At this time, we're going to close the public hearing. We're going to move to discuss and consider action on the adoption of the aforementioned property located... Let's see, I lost my place here. Located to the northeast of the intersection of North Baghdad Road and Collaborative Way, Leander, Williamson County, Texas.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Pro Tem Stevenson, with a second by Councilmember Navarrete. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. All right, now, we're going to conduct a public hearing regarding Comprehensive Plan Case 18-CPA-004 to amend the Comprehensive Plan land use category from industrial district to mixed-use corridor, extending east from Oak Grove Road to the north side of Heritage Grove Road to the eastern edge of Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcel R031640, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Ms. Griffin?
This is a public hearing for a proposed comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use category from the current industrial district to a mixed-use corridor extending from Oak Grove Road to the north side of Heritage Grove Road. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at the August 9th meeting and unanimously recommended approval of the change. This case was previously scheduled for the August 16th council meeting and has been rescheduled to today. I'll be glad to answer any questions after the public hearing.
All right, the public hearing is now open. I do have a couple of speakers signed up. Friendly reminder, this is a public hearing, and any discussion will take place following the close of the public hearing. We can call somebody back up to the podium if we should have any questions. First, I have Kelsey Stone. You'd state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Kelsey Stone, 2500 Welsh Charlton Lane in Austin, and I work for Badland Inc., the owner of 550 Heritage Grove. I'm here to discuss the future of the land use of our property, which is subject to being amended to a mixed-use corridor. As most of us know, we purchased this property in November 2016 to move our abatement/demolition office here. As a matter of fact, we were scheduled to move into this office this month if all went as intended. We applied to rezone this property to heavy commercial, heavy industrial in June this year, but after understandable neighborhood opposition, the zoning request was denied due to the obvious juxtaposition of placing heavy commercial and industrial in the backyard of the Savannah Ranch subdivision. Thereafter, council requested that this item go back to P&amp;Z to remove this property from the comp plan heavy industrial zoning. We followed up with P&amp;Z to request an update on council's plan, and formally requested by letter that we be involved in the discussions for the future of our property. We heard back a week later, in which we were informed that staff has proposed a 500-foot mixed-use corridor, the public hearings and newspaper ads had been scheduled, and the following use components would be allowed: local commercial only at intersections, local office, two-family, single-family townhome, single-family limited, and pud. We were not engaged during the decision-making process at all. The outcome was essentially decided for us. We immediately responded by letter, asking that staff table this item, since we had engaged a land planner and engineer to help us determine the highest and best use for our property. One, that provides a more sensible buffer between Savannah Ranch and then inevitably more dense commercial and industrial to the east. Our intent was to come back to the city with our plans and hopefully request for the land use amendment and rezoning concurrently. Staff responded and stated that the dates could not be changed at this time, and we would have to send another letter requesting that this item be postponed. We requested that this item be postponed indefinitely, and as a result, this item has been postponed until today. To conclude, our initial plan with our over $1 million investment did not go as intended. The future land use for the particular property obviously did not fit the adjacent residential. We have spent a significant amount of time and resources to come up with what we believe is a great use for this property. We've continued to keep our neighbors updated and met with them in person on Tuesday this week to discuss our intent. I don't want to speak for the residents that, you know, that we did meet with, but I'm confident to say that we all believe that the best fit for this property is neighborhood residential. As a result of the series of events, and expensive ones like that, we believe that it's fair for this property to be granted a land use of neighborhood residential with zoning of single-family compact. We have every intent that once this request is granted, we will immediately begin rezoning and entitling this property per the city of Leander processes, by which we appreciate to be expedited. Time is of the essence for this matter, and with the neighborhoods, I must note, with the neighborhood meeting, we did present to them the concept plans that I presented to Ms. Crabtree for your reference. Thank you.
Next, we have Joel Snyder.
I've been here before. I'd like to take a few minutes here to thank the city for moving from the high industrial, heavy commercial that the future plan was, and I would like to ask the council and the city to rethink this future zoning plan change. While it's much better for Savannah Ranch than the heavy industrial, heavy commercial, because of the willingness of the owner, Judd, to be willing to put in single-family homes, we were told it would be either SFC, which is compact, or SFU, which is urban, which is kind of what we have in Savannah Ranch. We know that this would be much better transition from Savannah Ranch to properties to the east on Heritage Grove. Mixed-use corridor, according to the zoning, are areas along arterials, but the current roads are not useful for this type of zoning. A neighborhood industrial is for proximity to neighborhoods, community centers, et cetera. This would allow the zoning that bad company wants, which is SFU and SFC. The purpose of single-family urban, according to the code, is to provide moderate-sized lots that may serve as a transition between larger lots and higher-density areas, much like is down to the east on Heritage Grove. To halt some of the worries that you all may have about these homes might not sell due to being next to heavy industrial, heavy zoning, or heavy commercial down Heritage Grove already, all you have to do is look at Maya Vista. Maya Vista was put in by the city and zoned for residential, and it is next to a cement plant. Maya Vista is selling well, and it's huge profits for the owners, for the property people, and also at a high price. So, I don't think you're going to hurt anyone from putting this as neighborhood residential. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't have anybody else signed up. Is there anybody else I'd like to speak on this item?
Yeah, I'm trying to get my thing. Feel about 20 a little quick, I apologize.
You can go ahead and fill that out later if you want, if you want to go ahead and come up and talk.
Talk to me, yes.
State your name and address. You have three minutes.
Hi. How are you all tonight? Wet rats, I would imagine. Okay, I'm Sandy Hetchings, and I'm with the HOA in Savannah Ranch, and I'm the vice president. Just wanted to come and say a little bit. Don't need to say much. First, I wanted to say thank you to P&amp;Z for going back and looking at the future land use map. I'm not completely sure... I was out of town, so I'm not completely sure how far you got, if you did the whole map, or if you just did that section. But it was evident that you were trying to start to build those buffers, which is important. We did get a call from the developer-owner, and we met with them, and they wanted to propose something different, which is commendable that they're willing to continue to work. As a prior P&amp;Z member, I do understand the process, and I realize that either you deny it tonight, and they will go in and submit their plan for new zoning, if that's what they, in the end, finally do, or you approve it, and once again, they go in and submit their plan and request for rezoning. So, one way or the other, there's still going to be another hearing down here. So, I think probably single-family residential would be wonderful there. I will tell you in all honesty, I don't necessarily agree with their whole plan by means, the square footage. I think it's a little on the low side. However, you know, it can be looked at and negotiated down the road, I'm sure. But in my past experience, it says to me that they still have to come in, one way or the other, no matter what you do tonight, and submit a plan and ask for rezoning. So, there's still got to be another... One way or the other, it's going to have to happen, if it's approved or denied, unless I've lost the process somewhere. That's all I've got to say. Appreciate you looking at the future land use map, and I hope to be more involved with you soon. I understand you've got four openings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else I'd like to speak on this item? Last time, anybody else? All right, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Council will move into the action item to discuss and consider action on the Comprehensive Plan Case 18-CPA-004. This is a action item. Counsel?
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve this comp plan amendment, not zoning, but the comp plan amendment, to change parcel number R031645, owned by Badland, to neighborhood residential, and regarding parcel number R031640, owned by James Robinson, to the east, no change. And that's my motion.
Can I get a clarification?
Yes. That's what I was going to start to finish, is the agenda, action item, Ms. Griffin, it only lists Mr. Robinson's parcel number. It does not include Badland's parcel? Can you help me? Or maybe I'm missing it.
So, that's where the commission identified the end of the mixed-use corridor, so they were saying it would extend to the east side of the Robinson, Robinson property? So, they just used that to describe the distance? So, it wasn't specific to parcel?
Okay.
So, my clarification would be, when you say neighborhood residential, you don't mean neighborhood residential zoning. You mean the neighborhood center, Comprehensive Plan?
I'm sorry. You're right.
I'm just trying to get... Because we have neighborhood residential zoning.
You're right, because it's a...
And we're not talking about...
I think she means neighborhood residential, because center would be the one that requires the local commercial and local office at an intersection.
For the comp plan, is it called neighborhood residential?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I did, right?
Okay, I'm sorry. My fault.
Another clarification. When you say no change on the property next door, do you mean no change from its current plan, or what's submitted to us?
Correct. I... We are starting the process of the Comprehensive Plan Review, which is going to include the future land use map, and I do not like the idea of taking a property that is currently able to have heavy industrial... a property that is currently able to have heavy industrial down significantly to local commercial without having gone through discussion with the owner and the entire process that we're about to go through. This was initiated uh by the city, not the landowner as far as taking it out of um heavy industrial, and then it went to planning and zoning, and it started to grow outside of this original applicant's parcel. And I don't think that it's appropriate for us to do that because it does affect the value of the property.
Then with that, I will second your motion.
So you're saying that the, the property further to the, to the e- east, you wanna kind of take it off of the table here as far as considering the change. That's what you wanna do?
Yes, this landowner never requested anything and got lumped in with the change requested by Badland through planning and zoning, decided to try to include that. And I, I don't think that it's appropriate for us to take that action on someone who doesn't, he's not uh wanting any change to his property. He specifically asked us that.
So you're still gonna have the residential next to the heavy industrial, which is moving it further east?
That's right, but we're at least not losing one more parcel of commercial property that, that we need.
Well, and I think what she's saying is that since we already know that we're about to start reviewing all of these various properties for revision of the comp plan, let that committee do its work on the property that nobody's trying to do anything with yet. And let them figure out the best use and bring it to us along with everything else.
Kent, so nobody's, has anybody spoken with that landowner? Have they contacted the city at all? Or is it just, uh Marcy, have you spoken with them?
Yes, Mr. Robertson. He does have plans, but he doesn't know what they are yet. And all of a sudden, this was thrown on him.
So you're saying if we put neighborhood residential right up behind him, though, there's not gonna be any transition in between NR and heavy industrial?
Yeah, I, what I see is the same thing happening. Houses go in, and then the next lot becomes industrial, and then there's this, this trouble again that we have with the.
Absolutely, but I wanna leave it to the landowner to make that request and that choice versus the city making that decision, or actually planning and zoning making that recommendation, and then the city following through.
So, so I'm a little bit confused. Did planning and zoning add this parcel of land on to it? Because I know we were discussing changing um the, the bad company's parcel. Was the other one added on to it after that? Okay, by planning and zoning? Okay, okay. Now I get it. Right.
I mean, he could always, the landowner for that property could always come back too when he decides what he wants, which he's probably gonna have to do anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, you know, we do have a, a, a new committee, commission coming up to look at this for our future land use plan anyway. So, yeah, I, I, I can see that. I can see.
We do have a uh a motion by Councilmember Cannon and a second by Councilmember Sederquist. Uh is there any other discussion?
Well, so, but the discussion is, so instead of um the mixed-use corridor, which would allow some, some local commercial and local office in it, so Marcy, what you're saying is your motion is to do it neighborhood residential with no local commercial and no local office in that, that parcel at all.
It really wasn't my choice, however, Badland's, that's what they just requested, and they've been trying their hardest to work with the neighbors. So if they want a lower category, I say at this point.
I, I, I think it, you know, and I did, I did, I got some emails and the that were concerned about, about what was gonna go in there. And looking at, at this, we got our new, our new sheets here. So we can have limited, compact, townhome in, in PUD, in neighborhood residential. In the mixed-use corridor, we can have all of those as far as density, but it allows um local commercial and local office in it. And so the, the question is, um do we wanna allow the landowner to be able to have that option to put some local commercial and local office in there?
The landowner is not requesting that.
Okay.
So then, and, and actually, the mixed-use takes away a substantial amount of the single-family choices in lot sizes.
Yes, it does. Yes, so if he wanted, if they, they wanted to go with larger lot sizes, then they wouldn't be able to. Whereas with
Neighborhood residential.
With the neighborhood residential, they'd have more options definitely with, with the, the home.
Like I said, at this point, um I think they've suffered enough, and I would like to
All right.
to give them what they.
Would it be beneficial to hear from Mr. Stringer?
Yes, actually, I would. I, I wanna hear, hear his opinion on this, so.
What do you like to know?
Well, I'd like to know um your opinion on, on this land use.
I will start from right here and take it forward. My opinion is we wanna turn this into single-family residential lot.
So that's gonna be it? Okay, all right. Thank you. Yes, that's all I wanna know.
I think your concern, Mr. Stringer, she just was clarifying, making sure that you, you were okay with limiting yourself to purely residential, or if you didn't want residential and retail. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I love brevity.
Straight to the point.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a first and second. If there's no more discussion, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously. Congratulations, sir. All right, so numbers, we can move to number sixteen. Conduct a public hearing regarding comprehensive plan amendment case eighteen dash CPA dash zero zero five to amend the transportation plan as set forth in the comprehensive plan Williamson and Travis Counties, Texas. Ms. Crawford?
Good evening. I'm Terry Crawford, Assistant City Engineer, and I'm here today to talk about our transportation plan amendment. The Lower Colorado River Authority will be installing a new electric transmission main along the route of the future Hero Way, west-east, I'm sorry, of Toll Road one A three A. The new transmission line will be in the future center median of the expanded Hero Way right-of-way. Williamson County and Tech Dot have also been evaluating RM twenty-two forty-three Hero Way corridor for a future controlled access arterial connecting Toll Road one A three A to Highway I, um thirty-five in Georgetown. This comprehensive plan amendment proposes a new cross-section for Hero Way, which widens the me, the median for the electric line and increases the right-of-way to accommodate a future six-lane arterial. This is the proposed section. The median is thirty-one feet from face of curb to face of curb. It's six lanes and has uh wide share-use paths on each side. The city also reviewed the alignment with the future land use and is proposing an alignment similar to the one previously shown in the thoroughfare map. Going too far. The alignment between one A three A and Reagan adjusted a little bit because as our road got wider, the center line moved just a little bit, so that modification is small. This is the first step in the comprehensive plan amendment process. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the amendment at the September thirteenth, twenty eighteen, meeting, with the condition that the sidewalk width along Hero Way is increased to fourteen feet. They felt like with the bike lanes being removed, they wanted to put those somewhere else. I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you. Uh the public hearing is still open at this time. Would anybody like to speak on this item? All right, last chance. All right, this time I'm gonna close the public hearing. We're gonna move to discuss and consider action on an ordinance regarding comprehensive plan eighteen dash CPA dash zero zero five. Counsel?
I'll motion to approve the P&amp;Z recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a uh motion to approve, a Councilmember Siler with a second by Councilmember Navarette. At this time, I'd like to uh inform counsel that as of Friday, the city manager, the city engineer, myself, and Councilmember Cannon attended a meeting with Tech Dot, Tech Dot. We did give them the direction to go forward with engineering only with plans and come back to us. At this point, it would, I believe it would be more appropriate if we tabled this and then look at the plans that they come back with. We don't have to adopt them, but look at what they come back with. Um we talked about it earlier, and we, we talked about the fact that that would probably be the appropriate thing to do uh in light of this. I don't know if you'd wanted to speak on this?
Um just to clarify a little bit, they're, they're not doing engineering. This, this is just a schematic, appropriate word, Wayne. And um they plan on, if I understand it correctly, having public hearings in December. It, okay, okay. Which that's very uh to present the schematic and the plan. So um and then it would require, after that, if there's some sort of agreement or approval, then there's a process uh to move forward with engineering. That would, the actual engineering's gonna take a lot longer.
Can we approve this amendment tonight and then still come back after the engineering and make changes?
Well, you, I mean, yeah, you could approve anything and, and come back and, and change it.
See, one of the things that we had moved forward with this is because of LCR A going through, and we wanna make sure that we can secure the right-of-way for that also, which will be built in the next year.
And then it's in the next year. Okay, okay.
I feel like that's.
That's pretty soon, so we really need to
Well, I think actually
Decide on this.
I think actually having Tech Dot involved is probably gonna actually be a better way, in my opinion, about where those lines are gonna go, it seems to me, because I feel like they've been in a hurry to get that decided because they knew that this was coming up, so. I mean, I, I, like, everybody needs to vote like they want, but I think it would be highly inappropriate for us ha- having just met with them and, and given them the okay to, you know, at least connect the dots on the map, and, and then we could talk about it.
Well, Mayor, so, Mayor, can I, can I?
Will we approve this council to give them an okay? Did that need to come for us, like, first and then?
No, actu- actually, we've been working, we, myself, before I was a councilmember, with Tech Dot, Williamson County, Georgetown, and Leander for years to nail down the right-of-way. What expedited this is the location of the LCR A lines because the PUD said to the City of Leander last year, wherever those lines go in, if later the City of Leander wants to move them, that will be PUC, that will, thank you, that will be at the cost of the taxpayer. So I brought up the question to um our city manager and spoke with Wayne, and we had, uh Tech Dot had done two plans, and it kinda stalled out. And then the previous council had approved a design done by Walker. That design was not approved or agreed upon or even shown to Tech Dot and Williamson County. So I pushed for the meeting on Friday so we could get.
I think I remember that going to them. I was actually copied on that.
I pushed for the meeting so that we could all get in the same room because we all want the same thing. We don't wanna have to redo.
Well, why don't we all get in the same room? I think all of council, I wanna get in the same room with them so that we can all discuss this.
I agree one hundred percent.
Yes.
I, I'd like to finish. This, this was rushed through to planning and zoning, in my opinion, for the two hundred feet because that's the plan that the city has wanted. However, that plan will not get any Tech Dot or Wilco dollars. And so you are one hundred percent correct. Before we take action on this, all of us need to be in the room all together. Mr. Kegel, when you and I spoke on Tuesday, you said you were going to make a recommendation of no action on this item. Are you still of that mindset?
I mean, I don't know that it says make a recommendation, but that's a, that's a, an option that I don't necessarily think there's a problem. Unless, I just heard something. I'd like to get a clarification. I, I don't understand what adopting this tonight, how that impacts the LCR A lines.
I think originally when we had started this amendment, it was because we wanted to make sure we could require the whole right-of-way. By our current transportation plan, it's a hundred feet. And if it were based on kinda where the property lines were and where the last dashed line showed it, it might not be going far enough. LCR A is gonna be acquiring their own separate easement. So I feel like that, that can happen even without this. It was just we were trying to make.
Okay. That's what I thought. So
It's only on top of each other.
Whatever action you take tonight is, does not really impact the
That's true.
Yeah.
That's correct. And my concern is if we approve two hundred feet and we're start, we're starting to ha- have the sit-down with other parties that hopefully will pay for the majority of this, and they need more than that, then we have to go back to the landowners. I believe this is premature, and um we will have a chance to have an open house for, for the public. This two hundred feet is not on a schematic. It's a general line.
Well, well, what I'm interested in is, is not just an open house for the general public, but an actual meeting.
Abs- a workshop.
A workshop with the county and with Tech Dot. That's with us so that we can all openly talk and, and discuss this together.
I think that's best.
I agree.
That's why decisions aren't made, you know, by just a few of us councilmembers for the city.
No decisions were made at the meeting on Friday. The point was to get everyone around at the table and do the quorum. I invited the mayor, and, and that was it. But it was my initiation to get, get us off a center. I wanna make sure that we're all on the same, and that, that was the point of the meeting. Everyone there at the meeting was ready to work with each other and agreed to work with each other. So I believe it was very positive, but it was only step one, and there one hundred percent needs to be a workshop with the rest of council as soon as possible before they have their open house. This, the, my other concern about this um this case is planning and zoning requesting a fourteen-foot sidewalk on both sides of the street. Do we have any sidewalks that large?
No. Oh, well, the TOD had some larger ones that were intended to be like cafes, green areas.
A parkway.
Right. But not for a shared-use path. The standard size for a shared-use path, their typical inner area is ten foot.
What's the size of the sidewalk along one A three A?
Ten foot.
Ten foot also.
And currently, there are parts of that Hero Way road that we're currently talking about that is not much wider than fourteen feet on the road right now. So fourteen feet um to me seems extremely aggressive, and I, I may be wrong, but does planning and zoning, I thought they were to interpret our current ordinances, and this seems to be a rewriting of.
I think where it came from was um the question I received was what cross-section we had started with, and our other arterial cross-sections have on-street bike lanes, and they were kind of looking at, well, we're just moving the bike lane over to the sidewalk.
Well, actually, we don't know where it's going.
Right.
Which is the point of the workshop.
Well.
Ms. Cannon, can you help me, like, if we approve the amendment tonight, how does that hurt the conversation with Tech Dot?
It, I don't think it hurts the conversation with Tech Dot. I think it hurts the conversation with all those landowners who have been By, by extending a right-of-way two hundred feet, we're setting expectations, and we haven't even notified any of those people because we don't know what side of the road it's gonna be on. I just think it's premature.
But if Tech Dot and the county wanna build the highway, they're gonna have to expand that. Two hundred feet's not even enough, so.
That's exactly right.
That's the whole point.
So you're worried about the expectation that it's gonna be only two hundred feet when it might be four hundred.
Absolutely. And, and I mean, I think the signal, however it got sent, was that Leander was holding this up when there seemed to be a lot of people, you know, of the opinion that with the amount of traffic that we're having move, move to this area, that a limited access road would be something that would help Leander's economic development infinitely.
Especially for this sector.
So, you know, for whatever reason, there, there is the impression that we didn't want this. You know, there, I think signals were sent for whatever reason, but where we're at now is, if it comes up in December, I think that's an excellent time to get a presentation from them here, get a workshop, and listen to the presentation about the amount of growth that we're looking at, and then we can look at options, whatever's best. So.
As long as it's not gonna mix up the LCR A, then I'm, I'm fine withdrawing my motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. I'd just like to make one clarification. We, we did share the plans from Walker Engineering uh with the county. w- uh, with the county and asked them for comment. And at our last meeting, um, we left with an agreement that we would do this. We didn't, th- this was not rushed. They were complaining that it was too slow, that we would at least get the 200-foot right-of-way, and then we would see what we'd work out with them. So-
So, they didn't mention that?
Well, I was, I wa- and, and that's what I tried to say. I didn't understand what all the argument was going on Friday. When the last meeting we had with them, we walked out with what we thought was an agreement. And in fact-
And that was my question.
I thought the issue was we were moving too slow for them.
But if we table this till December, um, it's, there's no harm in doing-
Not that I know of.
Okay. So, we do have a motion unless you're gonna withdraw it?
He needs, the Andrea made the second. She needs to withdraw.
I withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw my motion.
And if you table it, we need to table it to redate certain versus taking no action.
What would be the, uh-
Well-
I would prefer to take no action.
Yes.
Because I would prefer that we have a workshop with Tech dot before December.
And, and then-
Yes, yes.
And then if you, i- i- if there's a transportation plan change in the future, you just re-notice. That, that's the thing of taking no action.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we need a motion to take no action?
I'll make a motion to take no action.
I'll second.
All right. We have a first and second, all in favor. Passes unanimously. All right. Number 18, 17. Conduct a public hearing regarding comprehensive plan amendment case 18 dash CPA dash 006, requesting to remove the remaining quadrants of the neighborhood center located at the intersection of Journey Parkway and County Road 175, and replace them with the mixed-use corridor located along County Road 175, Leander Williamson County, Texas. Ms. Griffin?
This is a, a public hearing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the center that's located at the intersection of Journey Parkway and CR 175. Um, previously, the council removed the southern, I guess southwestern corner of the center, and the commission had requested that we come back and, um, remove the remainder of the center and replace it with a mixed u- mi- mixed-use corridor. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the amendment, um, at their September 13th meeting, and I'll be available for questions after the public hearing.
All right. The meeting is still open. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Anybody like to speak on this item? All right. So, we're gonna close the public hearing, and we're gonna move to discuss and consider action on the comprehensive plan amendment case 18 dash CPA dash 005.
I motion to approve.
I'll second, since you're the one-
Just by a hair. Um, since it's birthday girl, I'm gonna recognize councilmember Navarrete.
Thank you.
With the second by Pro Tim Stevenson. Is there any more discussion?
I, I would actually like to thank staff for working on this. I, this is a perfect example of where there was, um, an issue with what our future land use plan had and what the, um, what the buyer of this property initially came to us with. And the developer worked with the neighbors for months, and they came up with a, a great plan, and it worked out smoothly and perfectly. And here we are amending it. I just wanna thank staff for their hard work in getting that done.
I'm thankful to staff, but I think that, um, we're kinda looking at a similar thing as what we looked at earlier, where we've got a commission coming up that's going to be doing nothing but looking at areas like this.
The zoning was already approved on this, so we're-
Oh, you're right. We're not talking about future land use, right?
Nope. But it's a good thought.
Yeah. Kinda nobody's asking for it.
Right.
So, what is the purpose?
On this particular case, they did ask for it, and the zoning occurred. So, now-
But now we're doing the other properties.
No. This is only changing the property that was submitted for the, uh, M I Homes development. It's on, only this corner here was taken.
We already did that. Now we're doing the rest of it.
We're not doing the rest of it. It's just for the south.
So, this is the, the existing future land use map?
Uh-huh.
And this is proposed. So, we're removing the rest of the center and replacing it with mixed-use corridor.
Right. We're doing the same thing now.
Okay. The whole notes being removed.
Then, no, I'm against that. I-
All right.
All right.
Well, when you look at, when you look at the map across the street, there's already, like, there's some detention ponds and things like that. So, it, it's not gonna be used in any way.
However, the northwest quadrant, I know this piece of property, it's flat, open, beautiful, no trees. It will be perfect for possibility of, um, commercial in a neighborhood center in the future. So-
Well, the, but, but-
Well, we're not changing the, the zoning. We're just changing the land use map.
The land use plan, and they can put commercial or office in that corner.
But again, so we're going from neighborhood center.
Yes.
Where is this? To mixed, is it, uh, commercial corridor, correct?
No, we're just, just mixed use. It's, it's, but for what purpose?
That's, well, I'm sorry. Are, are we going from a neighborhood center?
Neighborhood center to mixed use.
To mixed use. Mixed use. I had my finger on, is it mixed use or is it?
Mixed use corridor.
It allows the same things.
Yes. Well, you could do local commercial and local office at the intersections in a mixed-use corridor. It doesn't have the same percentage requirement as the center. The center has a percentage of commercial you have to have.
So, this is a lot more flexible.
Right.
Yes. So, this is broadening what they're able to do?
It doesn't have the, the strict percentage requirement.
Okay.
So, it makes it more flexible, so.
But-
It's good.
Back to what councilmember Sederquist said, is this landowner has not requested any change, so why would we be doing it?
Well, when we have the, the comprehensive plan commission come together, um, there's gonna be input, but, um, it's, a lot of decisions are made without contacting the landowners either. And they just look at it, maybe, well?
Yeah, we have open houses, and it goes on for years.
And I'm all in favor of making things less restrictive.
And this, this actually, it, it actually makes it less restrictive. So, it, it would actually behoove the, the, that landowner to actually-
But I think if that's the point of the thing, then maybe we, what we need to do is take a look at our various land uses and, you know, look at, do we wanna have neighborhood center, or do we just wanna have it be less restrictive?
Yeah. Well, that, and that, that's what, that's what the, the committee's gonna do. They're gonna dis- discuss that. Cause those are the set of his nodes.
We do have a first and second.
So, I would-
Uh, over here.
I withdraw. Sorry, sorry.
Um, let's vote. All in favor? All opposed? Uh, motion fails. All right.
It was a tie.
It doesn't go forward, correct?
Right. Doesn't go forward.
Yeah.
I'll make a second motion to, for, uh, no action at this time because we have the committee coming up to, to look at it. And the landowner didn't request it. So, um, a motion for no action. Sorry.
I'll second. And just one thing I want to note is, um, our future land use plan, the city, you know, we have the obligation to try and plan the best use of land in the city. So, sometimes, you know, we don't, that doesn't always afford us, you know, being able to go out to each landowner and say, what would you like to do with your property? You know what I mean? There, there's an avenue for that.
And that's why I would like to take no action, because that avenue is coming up this year. The-
Right. I mean, that's where I'm at. Like-
The comprehensive plan.
We know it's about to be looked at. Um, let's let the committee do their job because there's a potential that they're gonna come back and recommend something else. So, you know, why, if, if nobody is asking for this around there, why bother dealing with it right now?
Again, it looks like the city is the applicant on this, so.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. All in favor of no action? All right. We have four. All those opposed? All right. No action. Uh, passes four to two. Thank you.
I apologize for the confusion that I had.
All right. Moving to number 18. Conduct a public hearing regarding comprehensive plan case 18 dash CPA dash 007. Um, to amend the comprehensive plan land use category from industrial district to commercial corridor on the property loaded, located at the southeast of the intersection of US 183 and the railroad, Leander Williamson County, Texas. Ms. Griffin?
This is a, a public hearing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan to change the land use category from industrial corridor, I'm sorry, industrial district to the commercial corridor. The Planning and Zoning Commission directed staff to present this amendment to change the land use category. Um, the commission unanimously recommended approval of the amendment at the September 13th meeting, and I'll be glad to answer any questions after the public hearing.
All right. Would anybody like to speak on this item?
Amy Dillon?
Um, you'd have to come up and have three minutes. Uh, you need to fill out a card later if you don't know.
I'm gonna fill out my last person. Well, mainly, I just, my name's Sandra Hutchings, 912 Hill Rose Drive. Mainly, my question is to y'all. Um, I haven't been real involved with B and Z yet. However, I'm just wondering why or has there been a complete picture of the future land use map currently there, presented for the public to look at and already start input? And if not, unless it's a use that's going to hinder, I guess, people who are already there, why are you looking at it now? It seems like it's being piecemealed. And I, I apologize, but in my past days, we had a big old map, and it showed all the different colors and what everything was. There was hearings, there was, uh, committee, there were landowners, there was commercial people all involved in it, and trying to hammer it out instead of piecemealing it. So, you had a big picture. So, that's my question. Sorry, but that's my question to council.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? All right, last time. All right. At this time, we're gonna close the public hearing and move to discuss and consider action on the ordinance regarding content, comprehensive plan amendment case 18 dash CPA dash 007. This is an action item. Counsel?
I make a motion of no action.
I'll second.
We have a, um, motion by councilmember Cannon of no action with a second by councilmember Sederquist. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like-
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I, I spoke with, uh, two of the landowners in this section. Again, this, what happened is during the P and Z meeting, they, in discussing, um, Mr. Stringer's property, it kinda bled over to this area, and a recommendation was made for, um, the change of this heavy industrial to something else. And, uh, the city then made that change and now has presented us with it. I spoke with two of the landowners, uh, Greg Brul with Alpha Concrete and, uh, Mark Marietta with, uh, I believe it's TXI. Neither one of these guys want their land use changed. There is a concrete plant there now. And I realize we're not talking about zoning, but the land use map affects future council's view of, of what zoning should be, since we're about to go through this whole process. Um, since it wasn't landowner-initiated and it came from planning and zoning, I, I think that we do not take an action until our comprehensive plan update committee goes through their process, their public hearings, town ho- town halls. That's when all of that process. These two gentlemen were notified by letter, I think, a week or two weeks before, uh, the planning and zoning, and they had no idea why this was being done.
Um, I wanna say I appreciate the work that P and Z does. Um, the other ones that we've looked at tonight, you know, we're talking about adjacent properties, and this one's kind of just out there by itself. And I don't completely understand where it came from or, or what the impetus is. And, um, I don't think it's appropriate for us to take action on, on something like this, where it's not something that's affecting a next-door property.
I'll also say, to, to answer the question of the, uh, the speaker, that, you know, we, we had a future land use, uh, part of the comprehensive plan update that we did, um, three or four years ago, and, um, nice maps all over the walls and, you know, a, a picture of that map there that's, uh, much more enlarged. And, um, so we went through that process, and then, um, I guess now we have a, a, a different vision of what that's gonna look like. And so, we're gonna re- restart that process, uh, in the springtime and have a, have a, a new comp, comp plan amendment, and that's gonna be all part of this discussion. Yes.
Yes, they've been told.
Okay. At this time, we have a first and second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor on no action? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Number 19. This item has been postponed at the request of the applicant. So, at this time, we're gonna move to item 20. Number 20. Conduct a public hearing regarding zoning case 18 dash C dash 022 to amend the current zoning of interim S F R dash 1 dash B, single-family rural district to S F L dash 3 dash A, single-family limited district on four parcels of land, approximately 16.9 acres in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcels R 099947, R 315744, R 031687, and R 031690, generally located 430 feet to the north of the intersection of Waterfall Avenue and County Road 279, on the west side of County Road 279, Leander Williamson County, Texas. Ms. Griffin?
This is a, a public hearing for the zoning request. The property is currently zoned S F R 1B. The applicant's requesting to change the zoning to S F L 3A, single-family limited. This zoning, zoning district would allow for detached, single-family homes with the option to construct an accessory dwelling. Um, the property is located within a mixed-use corridor and a nev- neighborhood residential category as identified by the comprehensive plan, and their proposal is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request at the September 13th meeting, and I'll be glad to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you. The public hearing is still open. Would anybody like to speak on this All right. At this time, we're gonna close the public hearing, and we're gonna move to discuss and consider action on the first reading of an ordinance regarding zoning case 18 dash C dash 022. This is an action item. Counsel?
Is the applicant here? Yes, I have, I have some questions.
If you'd state your name, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mark Baker, SEC Planning.
Okay. Um, I, I find it curious that these are gonna be limited lots, so they're gonna be very tiny lots. They're, they're gonna be narrow. Um, but you want the, the use of, of three, which would permit an accessory. So, I'm, I'm curious about how this is gonna be laid out. And I, I'm a little bit worried about too much, um, on those little lots.
Sure.
And so, if you can explain what your plans are, I'd like to hear that.
Sure. The vision for the project for the S F L is that it'd be an alley-loaded product with, uh, rear garages. Uh, the builders that, that my client has been visiting with have a product that would be an accessory, um, unit on top of those garages that are in the back alley.
Okay.
Um, an exact product is not ready at this point, or, um, for me to be able to show you images of what that is, but, uh, because there's two or three different builders that we're visiting with right now. But that's, that's the vision for it. It is a small tract, and we think the use is appropriate because of the location adjacent to the Divine Lake Park. We think we can get a nice trail connection to that park. We think it's a good transitional use that fits with the comp plan, having that smaller, uh, uh, lot size, but still detached, single-family product.
I just think, uh, especially when the item that was brought to council with the R V need for a disabled person in the backyard, I'm all about diversity in our housing options, you know, from our estate to, you know, I think this is, it's gonna fill a need. And so, thank you.
Yeah, and it does, it does expand, it does expand what we have available in, in the city.
I agree, it's not, he's not adding an additional building because the garage is already going to be there. And we joke about a granny flat, but my daughter moving home, so maybe a millennial flat is what we've got.
Oh, the granny's you.
Oh, oh! Now he's in trouble.
Mr. New, can you make a timestamp of that?
Great.
Mark, can I ask you a question? Where do you see the price point on these coming in at? I mean, any idea, I know you're the...
Yeah, they're talking upper twos to three on this, so, which I know is crazy these days, but...
It sounds expensive, is that...
Sounds expensive, but that's actually on the cheap end of things these days, on trying to deliver a product that's quasi-affordable, but...
So who do you see as the people that would buy these? Do you see the empty nesters? Do you see the never-been-married, or, I mean, never, you know, no kids?
I could see a blend of both. I think you'll see young professionals, but I think you will see some empty nesters who want less yard work to do. But with, if they do implement the accessory unit, you know, I think you get into some of the folks that, like Ms. Cannon said, that have either a child that's still living with them and needs a little more space, or somebody that's taking care of a parent that might want them closer by to take care of.
Like the visiting angels, they would have a place. I just think it's very flexible. We don't have anything like this.
And it follows our zoning, so it's perfect.
All right, thank you very much, sir. At this time, we do have a first and second.
No, we don't.
A motion to approve.
I second.
We do. We have a first by Councilmember Navarrete with a second by Pro Tim Stevenson. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. All right, at this time, we are going to move to our regular agenda. Number 21. Discuss and consider action on an amendment to the contract buy-in between the City of Leander and Texas Tangible Assets resetting the deadline for commencement of operations from August 31st, 2019 to February 29th, 2020. Mr. Willis?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This request came from the company earlier this month. To give you kind of the background, you approved an incentive deal with these guys on November 2nd, 2017. They had been awarded the contract by the state, but the contract had not actually been written yet, and they found it took a lot longer to get the contract done, but it is done now, and they're moving forward. But it has delayed them considerably, and that's why they're asking for this extension. Important things to remember in this is that the incentives we have offered are in the future. We're not at any risk at this. They have to produce to get the incentives, so staff recommends approval of this. And like I say, the contract's in place now, and they're in the engineering phase at the moment.
A motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Navarrete with a second by Councilmember Seiler. I did have a question, Mr. Willis.
Yes, sir.
What's their timeframe for building again?
They actually expect to be done by the first of 2020, but rather than come back and ask for this again, it was my suggestion to get another two months in there, just in case of weather or what have you, where we don't have to revisit this again.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a first and second, all in favor? Right, motion passes unanimously. All right, number 22. Discuss and consider action on ordinance amending ordinance number 17-058-00, which adopted the annual budget of the City of Leander, Texas for fiscal year 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As we close one fiscal year, we typically bring the last budget amendment of the year to capture any action items that have come before you in the last six or seven months, where we've appropriated funds for projects that weren't in the original budget. So I hate to use the word housekeeping, but this budget amendment takes care of amending the budget for those projects that have come before you, as well as, we did have a few minor overruns in some of our funds, but even a dollar has to be covered with the budget since we do fund accounting, so we recommend approval.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Navarrete with a second by, I'm going to recognize Christine Sederquist. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, number 23. Discuss and consider action on an ordinance denying a proposed increase sought by Atmos Energy MidTex Division in connection with the rate increase filing it made on or about June 1st, 2018, approving an alternate increase in rates, directing Atmos to file conforming tariffs and to reimburse the city's rate case expenses, making other findings and provisions related to the subject, finding that the meetings, meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act and declaring an effective date. Mr. Powers?
Thank you again. As stated, Atmos Energy filed for a rate increase back in June. The city council took action to postpone that to October 4th, which is the maximum time under law that we could postpone that action. In the meantime, our consultants have been working with Atmos Energy to basically dig into their information regarding their rationale for the rate increase and trying to negotiate something less than the company was seeking. And just to recap, the company was seeking on an average overall base, an increase of about 7%. But that percentage varied between a larger increase for residential customers and an actual decrease for commercial and industrial. Our consultants and experts in the field are recommending to us and to the other cities in the coalition that you approve a greatly reduced rate increase, overall average rate increase of about 2%. Slight increase for residential and a slight increase for commercial. More than likely, what will happen is the company will appeal to the Railroad Commission, and the Railroad Commission will have final jurisdiction on the rates. But in the meantime, customers in Leander would operate under these lower, well, these rates that are presented tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We like saying no. All right, counsel, any more discussion?
A motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Pro Tim Stevenson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Seiler, all in favor? Passes unanimously. All right, 24. Discuss and consider action on an interlocal agreement regarding treatment plant management and operation between the City of Leander, the City of Round Rock, the City of Cedar Park, and the City of Austin. Mr. Watts?
This interlocal agreement regarding treatment plant management and operations provides for the City of Round Rock to operate and manage the Brushy Creek Regional Wastewater System, of which we are a part. This agreement's been negotiated, reviewed, and approved by the Brushy Creek Regional Wastewater System Operations Committee and legal staff or city attorney of each city. Leander city staff firmly believes that Round Rock city staff's operation management of the Brushy Creek Regional Wastewater System will be lower in cost, more efficient, and more responsive than continued operation by BRA in the same manner as occurred when the City of Leander took over operations of the Leander Wastewater Treatment Plant from its longtime contract operator. The city councils of Austin, Round Rock, and Cedar Park approve this agreement. Staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you, sir. This is an action item?
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Seiler with a second by Pro Tim Stevenson. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? All right, motion passes unanimously. Number 25. Discuss and consider action on the Peternalis Electric Co-op Cost Proposal for the Brushy Street Scape Improvements Project in the amount of $95,627 and the ever-important .39 cents, and authorize the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents.
Thank you, Mayor. It's amazing how they can get it down to the exact cent.
Every penny counts.
Absolutely. Well, what this provides for is, it provides for Peternalis Electric. It's the incremental cost difference to relocate, remove and relocate existing above-ground electrical distribution facilities here in the right-of-way of Brushy Street to underground distribution facilities in public utilities along the right-of-way of Brushy Street. And this removal and relocation of the existing above-ground distribution facilities is required to allow the widening of Brushy Street, including the parallel parking installation, sidewalk, street trees, pedestrian lighting, landscaping, and impertinence for the Brushy Street Street Scape Project. Staff recommends approval.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Navarrete with a second by, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Cannon. Any other discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Womack, we want to receive our water use and supply update.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This is the water use and supply update for August of this year. If you look at the executive summary, you'll see, when this was published, combined storage was 1.37 million acre-feet, but as of today, the 20th, it's gone up slightly to about 1.42 million acre-feet, or 71% combined, or 71% full of combined storage. If you look at this LCR chart, you'll see that this is a, both a projection and a historical record. If you look, bear with me, I'm not used to this feature on this, but this is the date of the forecast, September 1st. If you look back to the left, you'll see that that's a historical record back to the previous September, 2017, and a projection of six months into the future to March 1st of 2019. Normally, the lakes are considered full or operated as full at just under 2 million acre-feet, that 1.96 million acre-feet up there, mentioned up there in the far-left corner. As of August, inflows into the lake, into the Highland Lakes, were 12% of the historical average, which is about 7,000, just over 7,000 acre-feet. This time period between January of this year and August, the inflows were the fourth lowest on record for that eight-month period. So this is a dry spell. If you look at this, compared to the last month, these numbers or projections, the dash lines to the far right, there are wet conditions, that green line that projects upward, and then the flat projections on the bottom are for the extreme dry conditions. But you can see, compared to last month, it's the same, roughly the same if we see continued extreme dry conditions. But going into the future, or, excuse me, future projection of wet conditions, it's actually slightly better than the previous month's projection, but not by much. And now for the Leander numbers, if you'll look at this, you'll see that the peak day, there is a new peak day for the year, for August. It's, it occurred on, I believe it's the 4th of August. It was a Saturday of 12.74 million gallons. You see it right up here. And compared to the previous August, the peak day was 9.62 million gallons. The summary for the month, you see right here, for August 2018, that is 346.5 million gallons, compared to the previous August, 223.6 million gallons. For the year, again, that is a new peak day. It's listed over here, and you'll see the previous record last year was 10.84, but 12.74, which surpassed last month. July was another peak day, but even though I say peak day, there consistently have been higher days at or near that peak. For instance, in going back to July, nearly half that month was close to the peak. It was more like a plateau. And then there are five or six days in August as well that are in the mid-12s, as far as million gallons. This slide shows the commercial, or, excuse me, the total and single-family connections for August 2018. You'll see that total connections are 17,453. Single-family is 16,460, compared to the previous August of 15,912 and 15,032. I believe at the last meeting, there was a question about commercial accounts, and commercial accounts or connections, excuse me, for August of 2018, 605 versus 555 at the end of the previous, or, excuse me, August 2017. This next slide shows the monthly use or production, and then the 12-month rolling averages. The production is, or the dash lines, and you see how they fluctuate higher in the summer, or peak in the summer, and then fall off in the winter months. And then the lightest blue line is for the BCR UA plant and the darker Sandy Creek, and then the orange is the combined monthly's production and then 12-month rolling average. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on these slides.
I personally just want to thank you for keeping us up to date with this. I know sometimes at the end of the meeting, it's a little dry, but when we're in a major drought, it's very important for us to keep an eye on these water rates, and we thank you, Pat, for everything you do to keep us updated, to make informed decisions, so thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we move to council member closing statements. Birthday girl?
I just want to sincerely thank y'all for the birthday wishes, and Mr. Mike New for putting up that little graphic there. I appreciate you guys, so thank you so much for making it a special day. I think it's been a very productive council meeting.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Shan, uh, Cannon?
Yeah, we hope that Shan, uh, Councilmember Shepherd feels better. Also, I would like to remind the citizens that there is only 10 days left for the countdown of missing out on joining a board or a commission. So the deadline is at the end of September. Applications are online, and we need as many volunteers as possible, so thank y'all.
No, we're at the Nile, I'm good.
Okay, last time I was here, I wanted to talk about baseball Little League opening day, but we were rained out, and we have been rained out every Saturday since. So someday, Mr. Tummens, we're going to talk about opening day, and I'm going to plug it and hope that Leander citizens come out and support our kids. Kudos to the Parks Department for keeping us all in the loop and keeping the communication flowing to parents. It's, for being rained out all of our games, it's actually run really smoothly. So if you're looking for some indoor entertainment this weekend, you can always check out the offerings that we have at the library for younger reluctant readers. We've got the Bow Wow Reading Dogs, but we also now have Bow Wow Reading, I guess they're not Bow Wow. You can read to a guinea pig. You got a little kid that wants to read? That's an awesome way to go. If you're looking for some entertainment without kids next weekend, the Chamber of Commerce is having Leander's best party ever. It's a great chance to dress up, bid on some silent auction items, and hang out with your council people.
Sold out.
Is it really? Way to go, Chamber of Commerce.
You can't come.
Put it on your calendar for next year.
That is a fabulous event.
So counsel and the public, I'd like to let you know that Mr. Cagle and I have been talking about some different things to bring to the meetings. You know, one of the best things that we've got is the water report, and we hear about it, an update, you know, once a month or, you know, at every meeting. You know, I've been doing some research on what other cities are doing, and I feel like it would be really good for the public and for us to get like a short director's report once a month, you know, or a meeting that comes after the month when you get the results. Just a very short, hey, we had this number of permits last month, or, you know, this is what happened in regard to, here's our crime statistics. Just a very short briefing, and I think it would be awesome, because we do have a huge audience, that's unfortunately looking at me right now, that is watching what's going on. looking at me right now, that is watching what's going on, and I think it's awesome when we can give everyone updates and just let everybody know really how great the city is doing right now. So look forward to that coming. And with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So be it.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming.